And now from McAllen City Hall, a meeting of the McAllen City Commission.
And good evening, welcome to tonight's city convention meeting. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation by Commissioner Joaquin Samora.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could take a moment of our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you this day with thankful hearts for the opportunity to serve your community. Grant this our city commission wisdom, clarity, and compassion as we make decisions that affect the lives of all our city residents. Help us to listen with respect, to speak with honesty, and certainly act with integrity. May our discussions be guided by fairness, understanding, and a shared desire for the common good. Please bless our city, our leaders, our employees, and every citizen who calls McAllen home. May our efforts today continue and contribute to peace, progress, and unity among all people. Amen.
Amen.
We have two proclamations today. We have Children's Grief Awareness Month. Commissioner Castillo.
County Vidalgo and City of McAllen. Whereas grief impacts numerous children in the Rio Grande Valley who have experienced the loss of a loved one, and it affects their emotional, mental, and physical health in ways that can have lasting effects throughout their lives. Whereas many grieving children suffer in silence as there is often lack of awareness, understanding, and support for young people coping with profound loss resulting in feelings of isolation and loneliness. And whereas the Children's Bureaucracy Center for RGV and its community partners dedicate to provide vital support and resources for grieving children and families. And whereas by recognizing November as Children's Grief Awareness Month and November 20, 2025 as Children's Grief Awareness Day, we help educate the community and support for grieving children. And whereas the City of McAllen is committed to providing emotional support for the youth during difficult times, therefore creating a safe and caring community. Now therefore I, Rollford Castillo, City Commissioner of the City of McAllen, Texas, by the virtue and authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as Children's Grief Awareness Month and addition, November 20, 2025, as Children's Grief Awareness Day. Congratulations.
Thank you Commissioner and Mayor and Commission, the City of McAllen for this recognition. Our McAllen office is just right up the street from you. We're located inside First Presbyterian Church, and I would like to take a moment to invite all of you, all of you on the commission as well as you in the community to join us on the evening of November 20th. We're holding a vigil for Children's Grief Awareness Month right there in the courtyard by the First Presbyterian Church, and I hope that you all would be able to make it. I also want to take a moment to recognize my dear friend, Michelle Rivera, whom I've known for nearly 25 years. She deserves all the applause. Michelle is a member of our Board of Directors as well, and I'm very grateful to you, Michelle, for your service. And I'm sure hoping it'd be okay if I could get a picture with you, sir, and with the commission, and especially with Michelle. She's a pretty girl, and the rest of you aren't.
I agree on that. Totally agree.
You okay?
And next we have Texas Recycles Day, Commissioner Samora.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. This is certainly a topic that really is near and dear to my heart, and my wife can attest for at least the last 22 years why I get upset when I have to go back into the black bin and pull out all the plastic bottles that are R3, R2, and R1 and put them in the blue bin. But I think she's now come to terms with it, and she now recycles herself. Again, good afternoon, everybody. City of McAllen proclamation, state of Texas, County Vidalgo, City of McAllen, certainly my pleasure to make this proclamation as follows. Whereas November 15th has been designated as Texas Recycles Day, and whereas recycling could significantly decrease the amount of Texans spend annually to dispose of their trash. Moreover, more than half of waste could have been eliminated by the recycling of organic materials through mulching and composting. And whereas the City of McAllen Public Works, through its programs such as composting and mulching, compostable bag, baguette program, and recycling for the future, education enforcement encourage our residences and business community to increase its participation and compliance with our city's recycling efforts. And whereas to encourage community involvement, HEB will be offering free admission to Quinta Matzatlan Urban Sanctuary upon bringing plastic water bottles and/or plastic bags to recycle on November 13th, the 14th, and 15th to promote recycling as an act of stewardship through creative reuse of recyclable materials. And whereas Keep McAllen Beautiful and the McAllen Recycling Center encourage community leaders to spread the word about programs that involve citizens in environmentally conscious behaviors and call upon our citizens to join in activities that promote and encourage responsible environmental stewardship through recycling and preservation. That means you, Elizabeth. Now therefore I, Joaquin Samora, City Commissioner of the City of McAllen, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me on behalf of the mayor and the Board of Commissioners for the City of McAllen, do hereby proudly proclaim November 15th, 2025 as Texas Recycles Day. Thank you, everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone. And first of all, I would like to thank Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager for the opportunity to speak about Texas Recycles Day. And so Texas Recycles Day is a state initiative that encourages Texans to recycle right to keep our communities clean, reduce waste, and protect the environment for future generations. The City of McAllen Recycling Center will be celebrating with a special event called the Future of Recycling. Happening this Saturday, which is this Saturday that's coming up, November 15th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the City of McAllen Recycling Center, you can find us on the corner of Nolana and Benson. This is a free, family-friendly event where everybody in the community can enjoy recycling education, equipment demonstrations, a pop of market featuring local vendors, free tree giveaways, and interactive games such as a recycling bingo where people are going to be able to win amazing prizes from charcoal grills to a Nintendo Switch. We will also be raffling free TVs every hour, so we hope everybody can join us. This year, the theme, the future for recycling, is especially meaningful because it highlights the exciting upgrades coming soon to our recycling center. Upgrades that will make McAllen one of the most advanced recycling operations here in South Texas. So we're inviting everyone to come. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us at 956-681-4050 or on our website, McAllenRecycles.com. Thank you so much again and hope to see you Saturday.
Before we go on and take our picture, I would like to see if you know by show of hands what the name of our recycling mascot is. Who knows? Shout it out.
Thank you all so much. And we're gonna take the next item out of order. We're gonna recess into executive session. And we're back from executive session. Okay, we'll start off with item number one, public hearings.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. Okay, so item number one is, these items got approved at P&amp;Z already, and they're, one of them, item number one is resounding
Okay, so item number one is, these items got approved at P&amp;Z already and they're, one of them, item number one is rezoning from R2 to R2, this is at 14 North 17th, it's just north of Ebony. Item number two is from R1 to R3, this is at 1901 Freddie Gonzalez, is on North 23rd and Freddie Gonzalez. Item number three is from C3L to C2, this is 3224 Buddy Owens, this is on the corner of Buddy Owens and 33rd.
Mayor, I filed and executed a conflict of interest form on that item as my property where I reside is within the 200-foot limit.
Item number four is R1R1, this is at 2517 Pecan, this is just west of 24th and a half. Item number five is C3 to C2, this is 201 Dallas Avenue on the southwest corner of Dallas and Second. Item number six is a conditional use permit for Taylor Villa subdivision, it's just amendment to the PUD. This is at 2021 South Taylor Road on Taylor and Uvalde. Item number seven is a conditional use permit, item seven and eight is for bars at 400 Alana. And then number nine is 11 city-initiated rezonings.
Okay, is there anybody here to speak against any of these items? Anyone here to speak against any of these items?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, I need a motion to amend zoning ordinance in City McAllen. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
And Mayor, did I file a form on just item four?
Excellent, okay, consent agenda items eight through, through C, do we need to pull into now?
C3, Mayor, on consent co-op purchases, you have a purchase within budget for a fire truck, refuse containers for Public Works, an excavator, again, through buy board, and the adoption of a P card program, the city's program rolled off and so that, that is through a state authorized buy board program. And then, General Civil Engineering firms, Eduardo, you want to make a presentation on that one? Very quickly.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commission, so we had, we went out for general engineering services, we scored 42 respondents. We think, I just to kind of, that's a big number, part of that is the economic conditions that we have right now. I think Tech Dot has frozen some funds and so we had a big turnout and so, kudos to staff for going through all 42 respondents. But one of the things I wanted to highlight is, all the respondents that we reviewed, one thing I asked staff to check is, are they all qualified to be on this, as, on our rotation if we wanted to put them on the rotation, the answer is yes. And so, having scored on, we recommended to put 21 firms on that, and that's half the list. Now, we opened that up if Commission wanted to look at more firms.
Eduardo, if we were to extend that list to 30, would that capture all local McAllen firms?
We, it would capture a majority, we'd have two firms that are out, which is Javi Nahosa and Rioplex. But 30 is about 70% of the list, we think that would be fair. Like I said, when we, when we evaluated this, the first step is, are all the firms qualified to be on this list? And so, 30 would be, oh, we could live with 30, and then we would work at who's most qualified for different jobs, you know, if you're doing a subdivision, there's firms that can do that. We're building roadways, we have firms in here, we're doing traffic, we have firms. And so, we'd have a good selection with 30, and we'd be okay with that.
Is it, is it any different than 21, 30, or all 42 then?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying too. The, but the goal is, is for the firms, the larger firms, that go after the larger contracts, to have a competitive, so that we have a decision to make with them. But the, the smaller firms that are, and especially those that, that have offices in McAllen, and if they're very capable of doing, I'm not saying a simple thing because we don't take anything simple, we, 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 we have to do it right, engineered right, but that are capable, that's our, our, our focus with, in this, in this commission would be to, to ensure that, that they have a place in the rotation.
To Commissioner Haddad's comment, MPU currently puts everybody on the rotation because they qualify them like we did, we review that. We'd be okay with that number.
Yeah.
The understanding is, not all 42 at the end of the day will probably get work.
No.
But if there's a project that meets their criteria and they were number 38, we would look at giving them that work. And so, 30 was suggested, I think 30 is a good number, but 42, we can work with that as well because at the end of the day, you know, if we're doing traffic and Marlene needs someone with traffic, she's going to go down this list.
Exactly.
And pick the firms that, that are qualified in that area and so, having more or less doesn't affect us, it's still gonna, what I need today is, I, I need to put people under contract because we have money for design that we would like to kick off early in the year.
And I'd make a motion, I'd make a motion just to approve all 42, and you guys can manage.
Questions, Mayor, sorry, I'm sorry. So, so you, you rank them by points, what is the maximum number of points that any of these firms could have attained?
I think it's about 130, 132, is that?
Because the max is 140, well, the highest number is 141.
32 points per respondent, or like, if I score, it's 32 points.
Okay, all right, so to me, the metric that's being used is a qualitative one, right? And so, if the highest firm is, has 141 points, to me, that, at least as a layperson, not understanding what you do day to day, interprets that, that's probably your highest qualified firm, right? So, in your mind, where is that cutoff, you know, this is, beyond, below this is like, really, really not as acceptable as the 141.
But, the way, the way, one thing when we're qualifying them is they turn in resumes, and so we have their firms and we, we see the engineers, the body of work that they've turned in. And that's how we get them qualified, make sure that they can actually even perform the work before we're scoring. What happens while we're scoring this is some respondents don't answer the questions that we put that we score. It's not that they can't perform the work, it's that they did not address the specific questions we had.
You answered my question.
And so, when we look at the body of work, they still have the body of work, they just did not address the question specifically.
No, they weren't even qualified, they would never even been on this list to begin with.
We would, we would give you, we would recommend a cutoff.
Very good, I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, if you want to just call for a vote. Mayor, item 3A is award of contract for consulting services for coordination of federal-funded projects.
Again, Mayor and Commission, we have this item, the, the purpose of this service is to assist in securing federal funding for construction through the RGB NPO. The services will also encompass guidance and forecasted economic strategies for current transportation thoroughfare projects that are becoming a higher priority for the city of McAllen. Staff recommends approval award of the consulting services to GDJ Engineering for support and coordination in the planning, project development, funding through the RGB NPO in the amount of $5,544.16 per month, for eight months, for a total of $44,353.28. These, these services will cover a period of eight months with a fiscal year of '25-'26, with an option to renew for additional time subject to city manager's approval, and we open it up for any questions.
Questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, next item.
Mayor, item 3B is award of contract for Freddie Gonzalez Drive roadway improvements.
So, the scope of this work to be performed at this time is for, by GDJ Engineering, includes the preliminary engineering and the right-of-way mapping. The project in the future would entail the construction of approximately 3.6 miles of five-lane urban road and incorporates the development of stormwater management systems, pedestrian-friendly pathways, modern roundabouts, and bridge crossings over existing drainage and irrigation canals. Staff recommends option one, authorization of, for FY '25-'26, for authorization one, which is a preliminary engineering and the right-of-way mapping in the amount of $634,150.64, with, with the authorization to allow number two and three upcoming fiscal years with the city manager's approval. And we open it up for any questions.
Questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, why don't we take CD and E together, it's contracts.
Okay, so this, this project is just to replace the Harvey Pump Station. The engineer record is Art Gutierrez Engineering Corporation, staff recommends award of the contract to the lowest responsive bidder, the RGB Industrial Machine Shop Pump LLC of Elsa, Texas, in the amount of $768,920, $920, not to exceed 200 working days.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, next item.
This is the Northwest Blue Line Interconnect Improvements, this will install an interconnect, a 42-inch interconnect. We're recommending award to the lowest responsive bidder, artillery construction in Edinburgh, Texas, in the mono 125, not to exceed 90 days. We'll note that this, there was a tie, but this contractor has performed work satisfactory through the city and so that's how we determine to go with this contract.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, item E.
The last item is for award of El Rancho Park improvements. The scope of this work includes flat work, concrete flat work, utility improvements at the El Rancho Park. The engineer record is Hanson Professional Services, the staff recommends award of contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Fuerta Construction LLC of Edinburgh, Texas, in the amount of $263,724, with a contract time not to exceed 150 days and we open it up for any questions.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, item five.
Mayor, item four is a budget amendment for payment of the acquisition cost awarded at the condemnation hearing for the property north of the Lark Community Center to Adara LLC. The proposed method by which we would use funds to pay the award to the registry of the court, we have currently budgeted $16 million for reservoir development. We will not incur expenses this year of $16 million for the reservoir development. So, I propose taking seven, the seven and a half million dollars needed to pay the acquisition fee or the eminent domain award from the reservoir development and then replenish that next year when we look at capital improvement and/or we have property listed for sale, funds for which can be reallocated back to reservoir development. But as the development project is currently programmed, the total amount of money budgeted here will not be necessary for that project.
Any questions?
Mr. City Manager, just so I understand, the, the proposal to acquire this property is a fair amount. But I would like for citizens to know that this is a tremendous leap for quality of life for our citizens, for their health, mental well-being, this an overall enhancement to being a citizen of our community and certainly it's a investment in, not this board, but certainly our citizens and I hope that our citizens will, will come to understand that. The, the amount of the funds needed for the acquisition is a fairly large amount, but the way that it's been structured and explained by the city manager, I think it's fiscally sound to be sure that we're not going to have to increase taxes or go out for general litigation bonds, anything to that effect. And I certainly appreciate the mayor's vision and the rest of the board in making this decision. And with that, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, item five.
Mayor, item five is an item that you all asked me to bring back, this is a vote for appointment to the Hidalgo County Appraisal District Board. Our recommendation remains to cast those votes in favor of Richard Garza, of course, that is up to the city commission's discretion.
The previous item was we, we nominated and so as a tax entity, we're now voting, so this would be voting for our nominee. If you wanted to vote for somebody else, it's a finite list, it's not open, so I would bring that list back to you. But today's act should be consistent with just casting our votes for who we nominated.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second. All against?
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, what do we have?
Future agenda items, Mayor.
Future agenda items?
Yep, Mr. Mayor and the city manager, I'm very proud to see that one of our board of commissioners is seeking other office. Commissioner Haddad has certainly proven his worth on this board and I, and I certainly hope he is very successful in the near future to do much more for our city and community, county, at the state level. With that, I'd like to have a future agenda item in executive session with regards to how we go about working that and his future replacement.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think that also noted though that you are able to stay on.
Well, yeah.
The alternative replacement is voted in.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and item number seven has been withdrawn, councillor, what do we have in executive session?
Mayor, with regards to item 8A, I recommend that the board entertain a motion to instruct the city manager and city attorney to proceed as described in executive session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, there being no further business, meeting is adjourned.